Mr. Vice President, I move that the board approve the March 11, 2024 agenda.
Thank you, it's approved. All right, now we'll have a report of our board members.
Mr. Morton, President. Just have a couple of things. First of all, I did attend the State of the District meeting where Dr. Penelope Martin Knox did a fantastic job of presenting to patrons and staff, the state of the district, some challenges and some great things happening in the district, so appreciate that. We had a preview last month of the musical Six from Raytown High, and I actually attended that, and it was just an amazing performance and something we can all be proud of, and those girls and the staff and everybody should be proud of the production. And I think there's probably one of the been a lot of those, but from the crowd participation side of it, it's probably the most crowd participation as far as enjoying and being part of the production that I've seen. So I think it was good for them, good for the school, a good time to have that, so appreciate that. Attended a safety demonstration at Raytown High School, that was very, very interesting. A good demonstration, had a chance to do some reading to some second graders last week, last couple of weeks, so that's been fun. Board Appreciation Month, the favorite thing about it is always getting different letters and things from kids, especially like the younger ones. And I always usually find a couple really good ones to read, and I'll read a couple of these real quick. This one's from Edwin, and I like his because he says, "Thank you for our buses." So he must really like buses. And then this one is from Taylor, and he says, "Thank you for our food in the cafeteria." So appreciate those letters from those kids and like to see those coming. Thank you.
So I also got to attend our State of the District address, which was very informative to hear about where we are and our plans for the future. And I too went to go see Raytown High School's musical Six. I would put them up against Broadway. It was pretty phenomenal. I would have went every single performance if I could. I got to be the plus one of the superintendent this week at the Lift Her Up event where there were 1,100 phenomenal women, and it was particularly powerful because this is Women's History Month. So it made me feel inspired just to be in the room with so many just incredible energy. And then I got to do, I judged a debate with, I think it was Friday, and the topic, it was really hard to pick winner, and the topic was if college athletes should be compensated. And so it was just neck and neck up to like the final concluding remarks. I didn't know who to pick. The kids were just really strong. And let's see, I'm taking a micro credential course over SEL, just to kind of keep up my competencies, my understanding. And then I look forward this Friday to read into a couple of elementary students at classes at Blue Ridge and Fleet Ridge this Friday for Read Across America.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I too attended the State of the District meeting with Dr. Martin Knox. I just want to commend you for all you did, and was it, how many minutes was that? You was going, girl. It was wonderful. It was wonderful, and it gave me a greater understanding of really what's going on in the district, the successes and the challenges that we're having. I got to participate with the Rotary in Read Across America this week. I read to some young people at Three Trails. I commend the teachers. They was crawling away, they was doing all kinds of stuff, but it was wonderful, and I loved them. I loved them, and I appreciate the teachers. Big ups to the teacher trails. I did go to Six, it was great. It was great. One act play. I don't know how they did it, but they did it, and they did it in great style. I also got to go to the Raytown Safety Demonstration and then have a meeting afterwards with some of the officials on the challenging things that we have to do as we look at the safety of our schools.
I want to just commend the district for recognizing the board. I really appreciate, this is one of the favorite times for me when we get the cards and we get the little special notes that the individual student will put together. I just want to say thank you very, very much, and I'm so honored to be a part of this district. And also want to give accolades to our superintendent, this being Women's History Month, so just want to say we're so grateful and so thankful to have this vessel in our midst who has made such great changes to the district in improving the educational development for our children. Thank you, Dr. Penelope.
Awesome. Thank you all for your service to the board. We appreciate your report as well. All right, on to the next item. We will have our presentations of recognition for Ray of Hope. Have a mic. These little mics are on.
Good evening, Board of Education. Vice President Watson, Board. This is New. This evening for Ray of Hope, we are recognizing Laura Greason, who was selected as the Greater Kansas City School Council Association Councilwoman. Ms. Greason has served the student, family, and staff at Fleet Ridge as a school counselor for the past 20 years. She was a Fleet Ridge student as a child, and she lived in the Fleet Ridge neighborhood, and has devoted a lifetime of service to the community she called home. Congratulations, Ms. Greason and Ms. Greason.
Mr. Vice President, so Ms. Greason, I want to say just a personal thank you, not only for what you've done for my personal kids, but for all children, so thank you.
Okay, hello again. At this time, we would like to recognize all of you for Board Appreciation Month, and we have a special recognition from Mayor Mike McDonough, so I'm going to ask him to come forward. And as he reads, I am going to hand you a certificate from the Missouri School Boards Association.
Did everybody hear me okay? I lean over a one out of grid. So I always love doing this every year. I've been doing it for eight and a half, maybe nine years now with you guys. One of the reasons so special to me is the fact that I grew up here, I read at Raytown School. Proud graduate even though I'm already a Blue, Raytown South Cardinals, 1973, 50 years ago. And I have known a lot of you all, as you change out, a lot of you all have been here for a long time, and it's always been a pleasure working with you. So start with Mr. Marty and continue really strongly with Dr. Knox. It's my belief and my wish that we work together as a city and schools, as a community. Because of that, you guys, without us, we don't have it as much as we do together. And there's nothing more important than our children, and they grow up here in both states. My son, 2008 graduate of Raytown South High School, especially probably most of these men, all super five, he's a big founder, biggest sweethearts in the world. Proud of the school district, came originally from the Son's school district, and not bash them because I'm not. But when he came to this school district first, it was huge, huge change from, because you all wrote the book on how to deal with kids like him. They had no idea nearly as much as this place did. And when he moved here with me with, on holiday weekend, everybody pitched in by the time Tuesday came around, then all of this. So congratulations to you guys, in my book of one, one. So with that, I'm going to read proclamation that I do every year, and it's heartfelt, and I appreciate all of you do each and every day for our students and for our city. Whereas the excellent public education system is integral to the quality of life for the citizens of Raytown community. And whereas school board members offer outstanding leadership and demonstrate tireless, committed service to the patrons and children of the Raytown School District. And whereas our school board members provide solid foundations for our school system, which is the structure through which our communities' future leaders are produced. And whereas school board members are strong actors for public education, do their work to understand the needs of our schools, and they beautifully lead the way for ensuring that those needs are met. Now therefore, I am I'm going to down Mayor of the City of Raytown to hereby proclaim the month of the March 2024 as a school board appreciation month. And I call upon all residents, all residents to join in this worthy service in recognition of our board of education's essential role in ensuring the well-being and betterment of our community. The work that they do to ensure the quality of our education system is of the utmost importance. Signing this 11th day of March in the year 2024, I went down there. Thank you all for everything you do. Happy birthday, man. What's you, 51 now? Yeah, 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 that's it.
Okay, last but not least, I don't have a teacher voice, so thank you for hanging with me with the mic. We have a special musical performance video from our fourth and fifth grade elementary students.
Thank you for all you do. Happy Board Appreciation Month.
Mr. Coach, I know you know the words. Can you go ahead and finish this song, of course?
I don't know this one. That'd be an insult to them.
Well, we appreciate that song while they look, we had some technical difficulty, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda, but we really appreciate that, appreciate the recognition there as well. Next on the agenda will be the
So, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board, members of the amazing Raytown Quality School community. Under the super, I do never miss. If I didn't take this moment just to give recognition to groups of individuals. First, I want you to keep in mind these following groups. The Raytown South Cardets, the Raytown High School Basketball Team. And so I want to give them a special shout out because this weekend, they both participated in the semifinals. And while they did not come back with the championship, they are champions to me. I did a post that talked about when I walked into the gym at Winnetonka, I went in with my head held high, and I left with my head held just as high. They are absolutely amazing. The work that our children put into their efforts and their talents has to be recognized, not just in the scope of social media, but publicly as well. So I want to acknowledge the work of our dance coaches and our educators, as well as our coaches, for making sure our students understand sportsmanlike conduct, the rules of the game, the way in which we collaborate, and the way that we still stand as winners. So if you have any of those individuals in your class, or you interact with them in the community, please make sure you give them a round of applause for their efforts and their hard work. They were absolutely amazing. Speaking of being amazing, I had the fortunate pleasure yesterday of going to the Comets soccer game, and so no, the highlight wasn't the soccer team, but instead it was our district choir that sang the Star Spangled Banner. And so just to watch our little people on that large field with those big voices just giving homage, if you will, to the United States by singing the Star Spangled Banner, it was just the sight to see them, as well as the excitement, and they did an amazing job. Many of our board members spoke about it, and I thank you all for finding time during your day, whether you are a part of the board or part of Rotary, or a part of the community, by taking time to celebrate and recognize Read Across America. Many of you spent time with our wonderful children, whether they were crawling or what have you, but they were still listening. I assure you they were listening. I think I had the opportunity, I lost count of the number of schools that I've read to, it's never enough. And so anytime there's opportunity for me to interact with students, once a teacher, always a teacher. So I thank our library media specialists, our principals, our administrators, for providing that opportunity for us to read to our children and making learning engaging and fun. I also want to take a moment to recognize, because we did not have a board meeting, but just the important work of our social workers, and then most recently of our maintenance workers. We have had weeks of celebration that are national recognition for these two groups of individuals. And so I publicly want to say thank you to Mr. Josh Housat for leading the work of our maintenance workers. Usually they're behind the scenes, but it's because of them that we're able to sit in this room and to go to school each and every day because of the work that they do, but also for our social workers for providing that support in educating the whole child. So again, if you see an individual who falls under one of those categories, please recognize them. And I also want to say to our board, thank you. The work of a board member, your work is volunteer, but I will say again, as I've said in the past, I, every time we have conversations, it's always about children, and it's about making Raytown the best place it can possibly be. And so the work of a superintendent, while you acknowledge our State of the District, understand the work of a superintendent would not be able to move forward without the support of the board and without asking those hard questions about the why when we are moving forward. So I just want to publicly thank you for Board Appreciation Month Week, and thank you for the work that you do, and thank our principals for coming and recognizing and bringing a lot of the signage here this evening for you. Well deserved, and thank you. And moving to the agenda, if we could go to item 9.6. Dr. Greiner, did you have any updated information regarding our strategic plan and the professional learning that has occurred? Or it's all contained within the PowerPoint that has been provided? Mr. Verlinden, would you like to? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Greiner. You do so much. I just thought it was you. Mr. Verlinden.
Vice President, Board, Dr. Martin Knox. For starters, I would like to apologize by all mature fire for interrupting your video. We'll check out, pause that before we issue our session. But to get started, I am pretty excited. I'm going to talk about one of the strategic projects that I've helped champion this year, and it's really in regards to our, the training we provide to our support staff. And to get started, I want to just align it to what the vision was that was drafted during that, the vision narrative. And this was really a discussion about developing a, what they consider a robust onboarding and mentorship program for all staff. And all staff, of course, means support staff, and we're working through this project. And so that was kind of like the genesis of this project, was really kind of highlighting that one piece on our professional learning. We also thought that we saw good alignment with the board goals of attracting and training and hiring the best staff. And really we wanted to kind of highlight that area about providing professional training opportunities for our school staff. And so knowing that, we developed the school, and it was really about targeting our professional learning to what we consider a high turnover for our staff. And in this day and age, it's easy to say everybody's high turnover, but really here, those are the roots of the thought of the highest turnover. And if you look at it, these are student-facing jobs, and so it's really important to be able to fasten what we can be. And when they try and support the competition, they're attempting to recruit them. And so obviously, I would kind of look at change, but this was a year that we were a department. And so before we actually went to and started crafting training, we really started from the very get-go to really make sure that we were very targeted for the training we provided. And so we went through a couple of steps to really make sure that we're providing what we consider the community of training. And the first thing is, is not just think the training is solely focused on technical skills. And we really looked at all eight of those components about work with domes and potential training. Because to our, and this happens in technology a lot, we focus solely on hard skills. And some of these things, when you look at soft skills, communication skills, things like that are very key to these student-facing jobs. And so that was one of the things we really agreed to, really making sure that we're very targeted. The other thing that we wanted to make sure of is that when they're targeting, we also make sure that it's relevant, it's communicable, that you know, there's all these different areas that we want to focus on. Because we don't have a fixed amount of training, so we want to make sure that we're very, essentially, we want to approach them, you know, the fit and shoot. And so once again, this was work that took about two months to develop before we even actually started designing PowerPoints or picking reading or anything. The final thing that we went with our design was really agreeing on what components were necessary for training. And I know all this looks very, very important, but we really thought it was important to have good alignment across our training, across all these. We didn't want, you know, maybe our transportation workers to give most of, you know, product, things to be at IAs. So we agreed to those top three items, but then we modified the items that we should really try and improve in training where possible. And I know the staff that worked on this really did work hard to make sure that we're doing everything we can to improve all of this. And so that was the kind of the getting part, and that's when I really kind of started with handing off those jobs to actually the department. But the other piece about this was, we felt that the training, some of the bus driver, nutrition service worker, and secretary should look very different. They have very different jobs, and then make sure that they're very different. And so that's when we went into the hard work of crafting this training. That's true for a lot of these. They want to continue to admire and improve what they're about, that was building this training process. And when you see, we really looked to do this in three ways. I know we wanted to get really ambitious and provide follow-up training weekly, but we want to make sure we get something achievable and tried. And so we looked, we had fall, winter, and spring available training, and we set a minimum at an hour, but we really took something, we took an hour and two hours of training. And a couple of things to consider was, I know a lot of people gravitate to an in-person presentation. Obviously, I think that's only the best way to do it, but that was the most practical for all of our jobs. So you can see that we, this group, we went to Zoom, we also looked, found that available article, we were seeing articles. And then groups of transportation actually built out full lessons to meet the budget for staffs. This way, then we're going to have that. So really, that's where we started to kind of get away from some of the vegetation and project, and that's something we figured through, that we need to figure out what's best. Really, we're in the execution phase of this first stage of the goal, but you remember, we really, the goal really went to provide onboard and mentorship. So we really, as a group, started outlining some future plans with this goal. We aren't done yet, just leaving this first batch of training. And one of the items, I'll talk more about, and this was actually not really weird in fact. That was mainly the design of the age, which does, you know, create that idea of sports app advisory, sports app academy. And I'll talk more about that with the actual board agenda. We also go, we continue to provide the strength. We don't want to just focus on what's currently our outstanding jobs, but we want to do it to all of our sports app jobs. Because while this is not the only, we're going to be working for the health of all of our shops. And we don't feel like this is something that we need to do to our business. The other piece about this is we want to continue to pile the screens, start to build that onboard training, so people have training available to them before they start building their job. Because at times it feels like kind of broke some of our new stuff, kind of off of deep end, to fit this room. We want to be providing as much support prior to that first step of working this year. And so while, while when we first started this goal, we really didn't think about kind of completely building out that library and all, and there simply was a, we really need to be very thoughtful and very, kind of do this step by step. And then the final thing is we want to expand the mentorship. If it's been very successful, I think they recently expanded our secretaries, maybe a few steps. We think mentorship is just as important to our sports and to the social sector. I'll skip the sports app advisory today, and I'll talk more about that when we actually come to the board agenda. But if you have any questions. Same, I really appreciate the folks and the people that are trying to be, and it's awesome. So I really appreciate you talking about this.
Thank you, Mr. Verlinden. The next item up for discussion is 9.8, the bond update. Mr. Housat.
Evening. Excuse my glasses, I'll be facing, and as Dr. Martin Knox. I'm sorry, I'm going to go through some updates with you on some changes that sound. Uh, just I'm ready to go through some updates with you, uh, on some changes at South High we had to make. Uh, to go through, it's, it's correlated with the changes in design that we had always talked about in previous meetings. Actually, I know I've been allowed to that. Uh, I've seen the concrete, and also I've come up and feel through our goal. Uh, what I want to point out is we're not, uh, since we're not exceedingly guaranteed maximum price, uh, price is staying the same, we're just going to use the line I have surrounded. Uh, so we can come back and have sessions with her, and then I'll be able, the two of us will be able to figure this. David.
The backwards.
Which one? I wasn't given.
Okay, so anything for, thank you very much for having us here this evening. As Josh mentioned, we're going to walk through some of the revisions that we need to make to shop ice one. Um, in regards to some of the progress options and rated wall positions. So just put your work. Nope. Okay, just next. All right. Can you zoom that in, please? You mentioned things that will go, would be great. Okay, so this is the original plan, um, that was approved and passed by, by this board and by the district. Uh, what you're seeing here is. So this main area here around the vestibule and this corridor here that separates the, the new auxiliary gym, the current main gym, and the new performing arts center here is the area that we're going to talk about. Next slide. So highlighted in orange are the areas that were primarily affected by these revisions. So this is the new plan. Um, essentially what we have done is revise this entry point here as well as this entry point on the south side of the north facility. So zooming in on those, um, what we've done is there was a. You enter into and then. Or that separates both. That area is now gone and it is exterior space. So students and staff, their entry point, they will come in the center doors, into the performing arts center section, and then into a separate set of doors into that corridor that separates the two gyms. We also added an entry point into the new auxiliary gym on the north side and a new entry point on the south side of the auxiliary. Which allows students and staff to either enter through this doorway here on the south side or um, travel up to the north outside and then back into the. For the, oh, not yet, sorry. And then, uh, what, what we also did is revise these entry points that go into the main gym. This actually resembles very close to where they are now. Um, we reduced the amount of openings, it's part of the original design, you can have them back, so that it's wider entry point for students to come in and out. And there are now two storage areas, one here on the south side and one here on the north side that were previously the vestibules going into the auxiliary gym. Those are now storage rooms. Uh, so there's still noise, and this will be able to utilize those. Also to note, over these doorways, we've added covered walkways. So from the front entry, as you come into the PAC and this main floorwork, the, the overall appearance will be exactly the same as what you saw before. But now we have a covered walkway that extends over these openings, um, to protect students and staff the same. Next slide. So these are some of the revisions, we just want to touch on this quickly. Um, part of the reason we need to do this was to isolate these buildings as both separate buildings to high schools. I think you guys have heard him talk about last year a little bit. Um, reinforcing those rated partitions between the auxiliary gym here running north-south, running east-west, and between the existing corridor and the new gym. And then as well on the north, um, between the main gym and the PAC. And so those are just really protective three hour walls in between those new divisions that they're actually seeing as isolated. Next slide. And so I know this is a little hard to see, but for you guys to see on the screen. But then Josh said at the beginning, we are not exceeding the guaranteed maximum prices for your contract. So this slide is basically a snip out of your contract with your perfect no back. The overall maximum price at the bottom, which is the thirty-four million. Your bond budget was thirty-five million. We are not exceeding that amount. But what we were trying to do is create some efficiencies between the allowances that we were holding on the project and pay for things. Um, that we no longer need because we're past that point of contraction, or they were already worked into the overall price from the contract. So we'll walk through some of those details. Next slide. So what we're showing here is on South High and Raytown High, as part of the original estimate, we, we had allowances worked in to help pay for some things that were unforeseen or that you may want to install later. So one of the first things was furniture fixtures and equipment. So originally, we were putting in hundreds by thousands of all of that. Some of those items were worked into the overall bid package that we were prepared and we approved. So we're able to isolate some of those dollars and they'll come back into the overall contingency amount to help pay for unforeseen score for things like this. So, so on that, the original was a hundred and five. We have a surplus of forty-five thousand, still keeping some dollars there to help pay for some small appliances, for the concession stand, some tools, for the stage traps. We still have some dollars to help, to help aside for that specific purpose. But now we have the surplus, and we're necessarily, for that comes in, so we're pushing it over to the surplus side. Ground source repairs, we'll lay a hundred and seventy-five thousand, just in case we hit the, the ground source loop during initial construction or pass that forms. Um, if you guys haven't driven by the site, we now have walls up around Performing Arts Center. Um, we're just about done drilling here in that area, so we're out of the danger zone, penetrating any of that ground source loop. So those are extra dollars again, maybe you broke back into the project. And then asbestos removal, we actually had about fifty thousand worked in there originally. We got, we have as a cover in more asbestos, so we're actually adding some more dollars into that allowance in case, excuse me, in case we need it. So that's where you're seeing that eighty thousand is reserved. So total original allowances, not contingency, we had three hundred and thirty thousand. Um, we only need a hundred and forty, so a hundred and ninety coming back to deal with reviews for changelovers and stuff. Now, Raytown High School, similar thing, smaller project. Um, we had sixty thousand originally in there, we're holding back thirty thousand. Asbestos, we didn't need it. It was just an extra line item that didn't get paid back when we got in the project. At one point, we were planning on connecting that auxiliary gym to a high school, decided not to do that, so those dollars came back. Um, and then the crosswalk, we're still holding that aside, where's the sole crosswalk between both of the buildings for safety, which is staff. They travel back to open the sixth street. So we have eighty thousand as a surplus coming back to the project. So down at the bottom, what you're seeing is one hundred and ninety thousand and eighty thousand in surplus allowances, and we're pushing the works of it, the continuing supply in order to pay for, to keep, um, to change the supply. So over on the right-hand side of that slide, overall, the change order for these changes to both of these buildings came in with four hundred and nineteen thousand, hundred and sixty dollars, seventy cents. Those unused allowances that we're shifting over are already pushing about two hundred and seventy thousand. Current remaining contingency for South High as it stands right now is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five. Meaning that, with those allowances and current contingency amount, we'll have eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars if anyone says left and only continues to sell. Okay, now, keep in mind, there's also a construction contingency that is covered by a perfectly no back to help for some of the other other pieces, so we're still more dollars. And then we have other allowances that we pulled back for some of those other items that able to be purchased. So, you know, the stories, we're covering this change order through your general maximum price. We just wanted to share tonight how we should pay some of those dollars to be able to pay for the sun for steam. Those a lot, impressed?
One, one other thing I wanted to add on there is when we go through, I look into those things, Raytown High, we're past the point, uh, we're out of the ground, we pour concrete on the inside. Uh, most hard on scene, really are only unknown, but now, we can have some unstable soil when we go to put the parking lot in, uh, relatively minor. So we're past the huge, uh, foundations like we did, or super soil on the whole side. We have that, we're almost out of the woods on Raytown High. South High, the Performing Arts Center, we're in a willing spot there as well. Uh, walls are out, puddings are in, underground utilities are on. We're good there. The, the, the part that gives me a little bit of hesitation is we still have to demo the existing PAC. That is a, is an intricate process. Uh, it's not just go out with a wrecking ball and it falls down. It's, it's coming down, I believe, six or eight sections over the course of a couple of months. Uh, so there is always potential for something to go there. Uh, so I just want, we're coming to you with the, uh, as we know now. Uh, I can't through, I wish I had a crystal ball for the future, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware right now, GMP isn't intact. We think we're going to be hot, uh, but should we uncover, the whole reason we're in this situation in the first place was because of the way, uh, the, the, the existing performing arts there was originally constructed. And so that does make me a little bit nervous as we start going through and, and, and demoing that, it's wanting to come down the way it should. Uh, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, uh, and it can have those exceptions if we need to.
Nothing to add, because both of these projects are operating underneath that GMP. Any leftover dollars from Raytown High will be shipped over to South High to assist with closing that construction. And any dollars that are used would just.
Any questions from the board? Questions?
Do you have, uh, new renderings, the front elevation of the PAC?
We can, we did a great one, it was an original rendering, it was so far back, that from the tree, couldn't really tell what the differences were as far as replacing those doors.
Is that your opinion? Is it just looking from the outside, it's not going to look that?
Honestly, the, the front of that rendering, if you look at those, it looks like blazing and boring. Portion of that got shifted and pushed back, so from that, it's really difficult to change this.
All right. When do we think the demolition of the old PAC will start?
Certainly it started as soon as the last time I worked with, uh, Mr. Hammond at South High and Fine Arts to figure out when their last, uh, performance is. There, we have some things, so there's quite a bit of abatement in there, right, and we have to abate until school's out. But in order to get to the floors, we have to, they have to take out, um, all the, all the CD and all those type things. So as soon as their last performance will work, we're, we're going to get in and start that process. Then once schools, schools out, we'll start a bidding process. When the bidding's done, then we'll demo. So it'll demo the second.
Excuse me if you've already addressed this. Uh, did you, did you speak anything to the, uh, as to the schedule?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, just, uh, where we are, it's, it's just as far as, just like the budget, like where we are in regards to where we are planning to be. Um, and anything that we might see that might, uh, prolong the project or anything like that.
Uh, so currently, we're on schedule for both projects. Uh, Raytown High School is planned to finish by December of this year. Sorry, I'm sorry, August of this year. Um, there is a kind of a, and then, uh, Mr. Moore asked about demolition of the, so that is happening this summer. The intent is the PGC will be ready, December twenty twenty-four, and new, uh.
So the original schedule push from the existing PAC was supposed to be finished in September. Uh, due to complications and getting permanent, that is good to December. Now, we'll shoot for the second week of December, that will be good. Uh, my staff time, we get people moved in, uh, get everything ready to go. That way the staff, I don't know, the school staff come back after one break, uh, they'll be able to use a fully functional.
And in regards to, uh, the, uh, revisions, uh, the new design, is, we can address that. Uh, we can make some revisions to that as well. Uh, I mean, and for the, what we were, what we were already planning on doing. You know, we revised it, and so I'm asking is, uh, does that allow us to?
Of all of you, so, so yes, so some of the, the changes that we've incurred, uh, there's a lot going on right now at South High. Uh, some of the, the changes that we have put in place of, of, of position, if we are able to go through and change our design. Uh, footings are there, great beams are there, everything's there. We have run power, uh, from the power, straight line, which you can see all the way up and down the hallway to where the point where we can change design, all we have to do is open that up, connect to it, and so then, then you ask your questions, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have one question about the walk, the crosswalk at Raytown High School. Can you kind of speak to that? It's not an elevated crosswalk, is it? It's just, what do you mean when you say?
So those dollars are put in there to provide striping as long as a solar, or a push button, so that it was for months.
Okay, thank you. You know, the questions? Sure, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh and Sandy. I need to go back and I stand corrected. I inadvertently omitted nine point seven. Uh, hearing the report from Dr. Calperra, the EAB Black, teacher morale, uh, the focus group. Thank you, Dr. Calperra, and I apologize for giving you. Wasn't attention. Maybe it was.
Well, I have problems in the chair that's ten times bigger than I am. See who's sitting, so they watch. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. President, Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox and our, our colleagues joining us. Um, it's a little bit weird, but they seem to plug the moment now, but I would say, um, you know, I had the honor of being able to go to visit schools. Um, and talk with teachers, specific teacher focus groups, um, with regards to teaching morale. Uh, I've been in the district for sixteen, seventeen years, and we've done a lot of surveys, uh, on building finding surveys, district finding surveys. But what we've never done is follow up those, uh, with any some specifics, teacher focus groups, and in-person meetings. Um, so I had the pleasure of going to nineteen different buildings and talking to ninety-six of our teachers, either before school or after the school. Uh, so I appreciate all the teachers who, um, dedicated and, 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 and gave to you, to give us their votes. Um, they were incredibly powerful, um, we know, educators, son of perfection, uh, with passion, enthusiasm, dedication, all parts. And they certainly brought back to these teacher forums. And, um, my only regret is that we didn't, we weren't able to promote those. And I tell you what, we did, uh, we did two things. It certainly reinforced that, uh, if there's, you know, the success that's going on in our district, it's already trees. You, what is going on in the front lines with the teachers we put those every day. Um, they have a tenacity and attitude, um, and sincerity, she's here, we heard foremost caregivers of kids. And that comes out. Um, and also, um, you know, if you hope, so many things in education don't feel good many times. Um, and especially obviously, the burden to get away, the burden to be awake in the classroom, you kind of lose track of that kind of what's going on day to day. So this was a great opportunity, um, to get into the building, to talk to the teachers about what we call the rest areas to teach their growth. And again, um, I appreciate teachers willing us to give us their time. I appreciate teachers willing us to trust us enough that they could be open and vulnerable without there being any repercussions. I've been sharing their heart and their thoughts and their ideas, um, and their concerns. Um, they came to give us, uh, what was in their heads and hearts because they care. And, um, you know, although at times as administrators, it's hard for us to accept and listen to feedback. Um, you know, we have an obligation to certainly do that. Appreciate that, Dr. Martin Knox, for giving it to form, um, one in here, what was in head and heart of the teachers. Um, it is incumbent upon us now to listen to your feedback and start some work to make some changes, or make, um, lived experiences for our, our classroom educators. Um, something, um, that makes them feel better in some areas. Um, and so again, this is a summary of that, of that data. Uh, again, I think it's important enough to share with the board. And the next step for this is not just to share with the board, but to now, uh, pick the cities buildings and say, what is the responsibility that we have to listen to teacher voices at the level, at the building level? And again, what are we going to do, um, to, 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 to change that? Again, this is the summary of the data. There's a lot there, so if you have any questions about, you know, speaking of. Again, this is the summary of the data. There's a lot there. So if you have any questions about, you know, speaking of the job, you know.
I have a question, Mr. President. What was some of the feedback?
Yeah. And so, um, you know, when we look at, uh, we had ninety-six teachers, uh, certainly had more than ninety-six teachers. That's about the twelve percent of our teaching staff. So that's a pretty significant, um, number. Um, what was interesting to me is regardless of, of grade level or building, if I was to give you a transcript of what transpired, we weren't able to tell these, this building, specific grade level. So lots of those themes were pretty similar. I would say first and foremost was time and resource, time and resources. Uh, we know returning from COVID gives, uh, presents to us, uh, in a way that we didn't see prior to COVID. Like we lost academic learning over COVID, which we did. We also lost the ability, we also lost a lot of social, emotional, um, learning that happened with these schools. Um, and we lost a lot of that ability to do school. So what we're seeing is, um, kids are presenting that belief goes forward and be well. That's giving a lot of time and resources, the way to look at negative classroom behaviors and classroom management, to deal with plans, deal with therapy clients, uh, responding and reacting to behaviors. Um, you couple that with, um, the new leaders and a new focus. Um, you know, we hear a lot about the cadence of accountability. Well, that also puts a new pressure, um, that is put on our teaching staff. So you, you may have this perfect storm of accountability that's been produced, uh, and which takes time and resources. There's kids who are presenting in a more difficult way. And so number one, uh, to speak to your, to your question, um, is time and resources. Um, you know, they are taking the feeling, um, this strain of, of all of that.
Oh, Mr. President. So I appreciate all the feedback. Um, after looking through all of the responses, um, and kind of seeing the different themes and all. Um, so I know you said that this is going to eventually go into the buildings, taking into account some of that feedback. So I'd be really interested in knowing what those steps are, um, so that we can keep this feedback at the forefront. Um, and so that the teachers can continue to feel, you know, valued, heard, seen, all of those things. Um, and then I kind of had a second question. I know that with these focus groups, um, and the teachers that dedicate it so much time to give them the feedback, I noticed maybe that there were, there were more of the elementary teachers. It looked like probably like sixty-nine and then maybe twenty-five secondary teachers. So I'd be interested in the future in getting maybe some more of those numbers higher as we continue to have this, um, these focus groups. And then there's another, and I hope this is not too much. Um, after looking at all of the feedback from this, I'm really interested in seeing what all the feedback looks like. I know that's probably a lot to prepare, but at some point.
Yeah. So, um, certainly this was, you know, we worked to convince, um, snapshot, you know, during various, remember years of experience, political experience, script, you know, um, very levels. Um, again, facing the threat areas to teach morale, you know, we tried to put some comments that gave you, um, favor of what was, uh, going on. Again, I think, um, one of the things that came out, uh, what we have to do as administrators is talk about that. Because when we don't talk about, um, what's going on in the day to day, um, there's a misnomer. And that misnomer, that misnomer is A, we don't know, or B, you don't care. Both of which are not true. But again, to say, you know, those messages, the message of, I think, so I think the first step is again, um, is being willing to ask the questions. Uh, that's what, that's what the leadership does. And I appreciate the, for us to, you know, give them a forum to look at that feedback. And so, yeah, this is what we're talking about. And again, one of the people we seem to do with every year is very.
Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, say this openly, that first of all, I think it is positive. It is pretty. So, and then the second thing I want to say is the important thing here, you've done the initial step. The important step is to follow up, making sure that they know, because one of the things that companies do, they'll have you to do this survey and you tell them this and that, that's wrong, or you don't like, or whatever. But nobody follows back up on it. So it's important that not only do we do it, but that we follow through, that we make sure that we make contact back. If possible, with the ninety-six individuals that was, uh, part of the mission. If not, at least follow back with, here's what we've done. And, uh, we're open to, to, to move forward, to do something that is going to let you know how valuable you are to this district. So I, I commend the district for doing it and believe we will have a good follow-up on it.
Mr. President. Let me say this. I wanted to be more specific. I asked the question, but I wanted to get your personal feedback because you said something that was pivotal. You said that you wish you could have taped it. So what I was asking basically was from the emotions that you seen when I was answering these questions, because I know the numbers look like. What was the field in the book?
Uh, I would say most of the buildings and their work tiers. Um, and that sentiment is, is not anger, but not frustration, or not ungladness to move forward on name and change, including something different for a fifth of the year. It was world, um, it was, um, all day today, just to, you know, just to keep the heads above water, caring for the kids, to act on top of, you know, being a, a higher tier award, makes the least, it's reduced it from the gather. So we've been here with, you know, people, I, six, seven, the best days of experience, they're supporting lots of colleagues around me that takes a, takes a toll. Kids are presenting differently. That takes a toll. Uh, there's a, a cadence of accountability that you know, every single day, that's due to that, you know, academic, uh, gaps and learning to improve, that there's oppression. And so if there was a sentiment that I feel is, we want to do everything to make, to, to move the district, to move case of the period of this, but sometimes we just need some time to, that's the, that's what, that's the sentiment. So it's not, it's not a desperation. It's not a lack of hope. It's not anger. It is, uh, we, we need some time, that time, like, to get our, get our, get all stuff we, it's essential, but you don't have time to do, there's some time needs to do.
So, Mr. President, my follow-up question. What question on this? Would you say? Would, I guess, answer that question that I asked you would be a follow-up question. What question on this survey could explain what you just said?
So, um, the way that process works, we work with EA, needles, these identification with the advisory board. Um, and so they've got kind of a format that we follow through through this. And so, um, one of the, initially asked the focus group is, what are you feeling as an area, a main area of threat assessment to your work, uh, that you're feeling right now, where your powers are. And so depending on what they answered, you would start in with those questions specifically, gauge, uh, whether that was time and resources, recognition of value, leadership, etc. And so specifically, uh, what I can do is share a few, uh, each of the questions under those red areas. Um, so you can see the questions that are time and resource, which is reference to that. One of the, one of the questions under time and resources is how much time outside of the school day you spend, um, working, um, bringing, prepping, working. So you can see on average, uh, some of that data was, it was, um, twenty-five hours per week, seventeen rows on this, sixteen hours per week, twenty-eight rows on this, eleven to fifteen an hour per week, twenty-eight of our spots. So you can get a feel for some of those questions. But I can certainly share, um, those questions in each of the red areas, uh, so you get a, um, a sense of what we asked when that was in that area. Other questions?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Mr. Dr. Calcara. So of the ninety-six you interviewed, were, were those all attending voluntarily?
Yep. Uh, it was to work with the council to put out, uh, information, um, scheduled at eight, either in the, you know, morning or afternoon, it may just be before or after school. So, um, you know, some of our, these are best as possible. Um, to go forward as we continue to look for, just to be more specific of how it gets, we see from the Chicago data, which is in search, um, to look at that as a bigger image. I think that some ways and, uh, a number of response. Uh, but yes, it was.
So the comments that you have listed here, were those comments written by the teachers or are they derived from the meetings themselves?
We were, we was, um, tracking taking notes. And so we.
That's a very thorough note taking.
He was, uh, that's the not, um, she goes and type a lot, um, that month.
Well, I appreciate the candidness of these notes. A lot of times, uh, the, I don't know, the, the feeling is to maybe isolate the board or protect the board from things that seem to be too negative. And I think without that, without this candidness, we can't really move forward as best possible. So I do appreciate the very, very thorough, if she was doing that herself, so.
Again, I appreciate you taking the time to, uh, look at, uh, the voices. Obviously, some of it's very important, um, uh, in, uh, districts where that wasn't even, um, an avenue that they were going to explore because it's that. Um, you've got to be brave enough to ask those questions. And very much here, talk about it, and, uh, so to be, you know.
Appreciate it.
And I'll add another piece while Dr. Calcara is rearranging my furniture back the way it was before he came to the table. But, you know, the, the work that he has done, um, as a person responsible for HR, I can't begin to tell you. Oftentimes when you get a lot, executive level positions, finding your space in a school building is usually nullified. Uh, when they're elevated to those positions. So I just want to say he didn't go kicking and screaming. He really finds pleasure in being in a schoolhouse. And I thank you for the work that you did, Dr. Calcara. And to your, your point, uh, Mr. Moore, there's no sense in hiding. Um, how do you correct what needs to be correct or support individuals who need support if you're not able to listen? A survey only gives us little analytical nuggets for us to use. But as I told the team time and time again, you ask for what it is that individuals see who are doing the work, so you can make adjustments along the way. And while we are not a perfect school district, I don't think anybody proclaims to be perfect. We can always improve and get better. And so thank you, Dr. Calcara, for the work that you do. And publicly just thanking our teachers for the work that they do each and every day. Um, education is not the space and place where it has been. Um, but we're going to continue to make the best of what we have to do what's best for our children. Um, speaking of our children, nine point nine.
Um, I am president of Raytown High School. I would like to talk about two things that have happened in our building. Uh, first, on February twenty-eighth, we opened up let ride, which is our fall one. And then we, in total, received sixty people that came in and signed up and donated to it. And then for our appreciation and service chair success, we have been a scholarship for it, so. How to organize. And then throughout the year, we created a way for our student council to become more inclusive. And by doing that, we decided to invite our CBI students, um, one Wednesday every month to participate in student council tasks around the building. And so far, we've done vacation, we made work on our display cases, and decorating snowboard and creating appreciation cards for staff. And then to further, further this, 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 we we started to plan a special with this, or take part in a special with this with our CBI chat. And it will be track and field related. We're still in the works for that, but it's going on other than that, or we will do it. It's going to happen. And then this, today, we had our speaker social and we played them on the block. And our sessions are a way for our council to become more connected, to really build on that teamwork and that. And then this week is student council stage, which consists of papers, it's not new, down to Harvard High School. And participating in huge workshops, hearing some of our leaders and really just building on it and our skills and how to become a better leader in real time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so as I prepare, um, to wrap up the superintendent's, um, report, um, unfortunately, Mr. Colster had to leave. But I wanted to publicly recognize him. The other evening, uh, during the Raytown High School concert, Mr. Colster, who also serves as our fine arts curriculum coordinator, uh, for the district, was presented with an award from the Kansas City Steinway, um, um, piano company. Um, so his recognitions for all of the hard work and dedication and being identified as one who contributes to the workaround of music education, um, and the hard work that he does. So we talk about six, we talk about all those other, um, accolades that our children in the arts receive. Uh, a lot of it is as a result of his expertise in that area and providing opportunities for our children. So unfortunately, he's not here to hear me again, publicly acknowledge him, but I'm quite sure he can go back and play the video, but, uh, I tell him whenever I see him that I'm grateful for him and appreciative of him. And I apologize for not being honest the other evening. And to finally wrap up, uh, when Dr. Calcara gave the report about, um, having those focus groups with our teachers, I too often have focus groups with students. Um, and most recently I had a focus group with students. Many of you mentioned the safety demonstration. Uh, but it is as a result of the relationships that I have with students where they are able to share with me their concerns. And so right after that safety demonstration, we had focus groups with students for them to really get underneath what is really happening in the building so that we can make adjustments. As I stated the other evening when I met with, uh, the support staff, um, this is a place where we, um, as a nation have come to a place in terms of education. One thing COVID has done, it has landed us all in the same space, um, as educators and as leaders, always trying to find ways to improve the ways in which we can provide academic, um, support for our children to ensure that they're able to come to school and learn. And so after the safety demonstration, again, I had a heartfelt conversation with two different student focus groups. And I will continue to have those groups because as I stated to an organization the other evening, this is not a quick fix. This isn't a knee jerk reaction. This is really getting underneath the work to see how we can, one, support our children, two, support our staff, and three, put supports in place so that we can continue to move forward as a school district, um, where students are able to come to school in a safe environment. Our staff's able to come to school in a safe environment. And we talked about my three non-negotiables, um, when it comes down to doing so. And so for anyone who has questions about where we stand when it comes down to classroom disruption or school disruption, there's three non-negotiables. One is volatile actions towards other students and to adults. The other one is drugs or any type of paraphernalia. And the third is weapons. There are no non, there are not negotiables when it comes down to maintaining the safety and order of our school district. And so I just wanted to make sure that our students who participated in the focus group with me, I thank you. I thank our parents who participated in the weapons, uh, demonstration. Some of them are here tonight, but I won't call them out. And for our staff who participated in that weapons, uh, demonstration as well. And I, as a leader who continues to work to grow, I've had conversations with other superintendents, with other leaders in other districts, and they're facing the same challenges. But one thing I can assure you, regardless as to the challenges, we're going to continue to work methodically to ensure that whatever we put into place is sustainable. And it is again, not a knee jerk reaction, uh, to solve matters. And again, it boils down to relationships. And so with the work of Dr. Griner, we're continuing to focus on the social, emotional wellbeing. Um, there's an item on the agenda. Again, it's not going to be a quick fix, but understand it will be fixed. This, uh, Mr. Chair or Vice Chair is the conclusion of the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. Next, we'll have our public comment period.
Next, we'll have our public comment period. So on agenda items. District, uh, residents and employees wishing to speak to the agenda items should have signed below. We have one signature, uh, one person signed up to make public comment, uh, in regards to, uh, item twelve point four on the agenda. Public comments should not exceed thirty minutes. Uh, five minutes will be allotted to each person except in instances where there are six or more willing to have one at this time. Uh, thus we'll have the maximum of five minutes. The speakers will not be, we will not be permitted to partic- to participate in gossip, make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Uh, we have Serena Baker, a Barker.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, the board.
Hello.
Tom.
My name is Sharon Baker and I'm a student of Raytown. I'm here to talk about the school safety systems, I mean, like some of them will come in the future regarding, um, twelve point four. Um, for the background, I'm not as well as far as I know, at least five guns have been found, so it's just a Raytown pop. They have only the ones that were found, it means that they most likely have been found by many others. I feel unsafe going to school, um, every single day to do some things like this. I'm worried about the safety of me, the safety of my friends, and the safety of everyone around me. Currently, the only safety measures that I'm aware of being in place are see-through backpacks and random searches accompanied by metal detecting laws. Today, we will also be discussing, uh, the new AI system metal detectors. Um, well, I don't know that, um, clear backpacks nor, um, random searches are very effective ways to, um, sorry. I don't feel that either are very effective ways to find firearms on people. Uh, that is not what this is about. Um, so I'm going to instead talk about, uh, the metal detectors, uh, which although I'm very glad the metal detectors are being put into schools, um, and I, I believe that AI has a lot of flaws, uh, that are present, um, such as sensitivity, um, and other such things. Um, and I'm just, I'm, I'm just worried that this might not be the best possible metal detection system that we would use to keep even play at Raytown and the other schools in the bus.
That, you guys, I thank you for your comment. Next, we'll have our, uh, board committee reports. Uh, I'll just go down the list. Uh, finance committee, our work, uh, policy review committee. There's no report from the capital improvement committee. We heard, uh, the presentation today. Um, community engagement committee.
Um, community engagement committees, we, uh, we finalized thing with college coaching network. We finished, we finished. And we will have the, uh, about, uh, next about month, we meet in five, thirteen, twenty-four.
Safety committee.
So the safety committee will have its first meeting this upcoming Wednesday, um, as we continue to work through resolutions for our school as a collective body. Um, as we've talked about repeatedly, um, this is not a school issue, this is not a district issue, but it is a community matter. Uh, so that establishes the importance of making sure we have a safety task force, uh, under your leadership and guidance, uh, President Burton.
All right. Uh, you want to speak on the citizens advisory committee? Citizens Advisory Committee.
I wanted to feel official. So we met as a citizen advisory committee, um, for the first time in, in quite some time, uh, due to the inclement weather. So the agenda that we had established, um, back in January for the citizens advisory was the same, uh, agenda that we used for the most recent meeting. During that time, we had a report from Dr. Greiner, who shared with us the work that we're doing with, uh, forward next generation learning. Um, as we are looking at ways in which we can enrich the learning opportunities for our students by providing a more hands-on, authentic uh, approach to ensuring that as our students are graduating, they are prepared for college and or careers and or military. So Dr. Greiner did an amazing job with providing, um, updated information, uh, and then sharing with others who did not have the opportunity to participate. Um, the work that we, um, engaged in in terms of forthcoming and meeting with various focus groups. Um, so thank you, board, for participating in that, to our parents, our students, and to Dr. Greiner for his work regarding that. Um, the next item that we discussed was policy BDDH, where we, um, clearly explained, um, public participation. Uh, but the importance of being able to hear the voice, as you could hear tonight, whether it's teacher voice, student voice, parent voice, it's all important in shaping the work and all that information that we collect is taken into consideration. Uh, but we shared with the, uh, citizens advisory council committee that we in May of twenty twenty-three finalized policy BDDH and that policy is aligned with Missouri's school boards association policy for public participation. But what we've also stressed is that if there is a pressing matter, um, we have highly skilled teachers, um, administrators, executive leadership, and a board who's always available and ready to hear, um, those matters when they are brought to our attention. So I, uh, reiterated that as well. And I believe I touched on some of this a few moments ago, uh, in the superintendent's report, but we also talked about school safety. And one of the strategies that we utilized during that time was I asked the committee to Google a couple of topics. I asked the committee to Google school violence. I asked the committee to Google, uh, student discipline. I also asked them to Google, uh, policies, um, associated or practices associated with students who live in poverty and academic achievement. And I asked them to give me the number of articles that show up in Google regarding those topics. And they couldn't tell me the numbers because they were so large. There are billions of articles out there that are related to those topics. And the purpose of doing that is one, so we can look at resources that may have already been developed by other districts. But again, to say that we are not in an isolated space here in Raytown when it comes to those topics. Um, so as we continue to move the work forward when it comes down to safety, to have a broad perspective, to encourage feedback. And I hope she's okay with it. Um, but Kat Hoffman, uh, heard the message that we, um, that we delivered. And the next day, I believe she acted on her promise and ensuring she's a partner in this work. And I appreciate you for that. And I hope you're okay with me calling your name out, Ms. Hoffman. Um, but she came the very next day saying, here, I'm in this work with you. When we're talking about school safety, I said it earlier, it is a collective approach. Um, and so again, thank you, Ms. Hoffman, for hearing the message and acting on it, uh, and just being diligent, uh, in your efforts. And so that concludes the three items that we talked about in the citizens advisory committee meeting.
I just wanted to, uh, add that, um, the last meeting, I mentioned, uh, the creation of a task force. The, uh, the safety committee meeting will be, uh, on Wednesday will be, um, that creation of the task force. And, uh, the decisions that will be made, uh, we're hoping that, uh, there will be nothing on, on or off the table um, until that committee has really got to delve into what exactly would be fitting for us in regards to what we should do about our safety issues here in Raytown. And so, um, we've gotten, uh, responses from people who, uh, principals have recommended different, uh, people who have asked to be on the task force. And, uh, we're, uh, planning to really dig into this, all those, uh, millions of articles and experiences that, uh, billions, billions of articles and, and things of that nature. Looking forward to see what those recommend, the recommendations that come out of those. Um, there has, uh, there will be decisions made. And I'll just say that there's none that's been made by this board. There's been no changes in regards to, uh, our, our disciplined procedures as far as tightening or loosening or, but we, we look at each case, uh, case by case. And we definitely, uh, want to make sure that we follow policy. So, um, I look forward to, uh, the results that come out of those, out of those meetings. Next. Motion.
Mr. President, I'm moved that the board through the December eleven, twenty twenty-three, finance meeting, meeting minutes. February twelve, twenty twenty-four, policy review meeting, meeting minutes. And on March fourth, twenty twenty-four, citizens advisory committee meeting.
Both the mayor and second. Moving on to, uh, new breakfast. We have, uh, insurance renewal presentation.
Meeting, meeting again, um, President Number Four, Mark Knox. Um, I understand that this just goes back twelve point one and you read twenty-four, twenty-five insurance renewal presentation. And you may not have the same level of excitement that I have or you should have, only because you do not yet know what, uh, Mr. Johnson from CBIS is about to present to us. Uh, we've been working with CBIS for a long time. Come on up here, Mr. Johnson.
Keep on spaceship.
Oh, he does not.
I appreciate it.
Uh, obviously, one of the things that we need to do is take care of both, take care of both of us. And so, uh, I mean, the one piece of feedback that we get a lot is what can you do to help, uh, our employees that carry insurance with employee plus spouse, employee plus, uh, dependents and, and family. And one of the things that we, we've never been able to, to do is go offer pays that show lower premiums for our folks. And so, um, you know, dating this year says, probably have not been to bid in a while. Our job is to find the most effective packages for you. So you need to let us do our jobs. And I said, all right, this is Johnson, this is, he'll give. And he did. Uh, and because of that, you know, uh, we're either offer traps and pretty bad, but it's awesome. So, uh, he's here tonight to, to, to walk us through the highlights of that, um, those bids. And again, um, what that means for us going forward. So if you could pull others, uh, that.
If that'll work. It's not that one. How do I stand like this?
Still not gonna work.
Good enough. Board members, uh, David Johnson, with CBIS Benefits Insurance Services, thank you for spending some time this evening. We'll go through the renewal presentation. We'll be quick, local time, I'm very, obviously, if you have questions, please let us know. So every year at this time, uh, we talk about all your benefit plan renewals. Now, just prior year history, next page, please, there are actually two pages. We like to put pretty stuff in here. Next page. Your prior year renewal history. So last year, uh, there was basically one plan design change. You have a qualified high deductible healthcare plan. You have to maintain a minimum amount of deductible for that plan to be considered embedded, which means that if a dependent is on the plan, the dependent just has to need the lower deductible. That was twenty-eight hundred and moved to three thousand dollars last year. That was the only change in plan. And we're able to renew the plan with no interest. So all the other plans were in the middle of rate guarantee. Slide to the next page. This is your renewal history, the past several years. And you can see what's really important. The last three years have been at either half a percent increase or zero. That's a two point four percent increase average since two thousand seventeen. And during that time, there really has been very minimal plan design change, other than that deductible that I talked about. So based on annual trends, that's, it's really, uh, it's unheard of that it's that good the last three years. So that's, that's fabulous experience, given that annual trend is right around nine to ten percent. So we're very pleased with that history for the employees of the district. Next page. This shows you, uh, I won't go in a whole lot of detail here, but this is one of the pages that we, that we send to administration every month. And talks about your claims experience on a monthly basis. I think the things that are most important in the upper right-hand box there, you can see what the trend has been for the last twelve months. So you're rolling twelve months from December of twenty-two through the end of November of twenty-three. Your trend in terms of your claims experience, remember, per month is increasing at about four percent. So again, over to the market, very good trend. It's actually three percent after removing large claims and that's an even better number. And you can see we split that out by the different plans that you have. You can see, it's a nice pretty graph in the middle there, what your monthly claims are. So you're really, those numbers are really good, especially the last three months, which is really key what we go to look at. So, and then down at the bottom of the page, you can see for the last four months, you have about eight point eight million dollars in paid claims. Big plan. You have a lot of claims going out. You have a lot of people covered. Um, but it's very good plan. Your client experience has been very good. If you'll flip a couple of pages to, so medical plan bid results. And we recommend our clients that we review the market every three to five years. Uh, sometimes we do every three if claims experiences may be bad or something happens in the marketplace. Uh, maybe providers go out or any number of different issues. You haven't been out to bid for a few years, so we've recommended that we did that this year. We sent a request for proposal to remaining four carriers in the marketplace years ago, that were several, now we're now to about four. That was Blue Cross of Kansas City, Aetna, Cigna, and United Healthcare. Three carriers responded, which is Blue KC, which is your current carrier, Aetna and Cigna, and UHC, excuse me, declined to provide a proposal. The Blue Cross increase initially was five point six percent, but they agreed to go to zero. If we agree to change the prescription protocol formulary, we will talk about that in a little bit. And they're also going to offer a couple of plans that are going to be lower in premium. So we'll keep all the current plans in place. But we'll have a couple of options that are going to be lower in premium for employees and for their dependents. So we're excited about that offer. Um, just, there will be one change again with that high deductible healthcare plan. That renewal ratchets up every year and that's a statutory change. It's a government regulated change. So that deductible is going to go from three thousand to thirty-two hundred individually, sixty-four hundred per fan. Aetna did provide a proposal. It was basically at zero percent. Not much of a reason to move, especially moving away from the carrier that has been, uh, frankly, had a great relationship with, had done a nice job. There really wasn't much of an offer on the table that was better than what you had currently. Same thing with Cigna. Your plan currently is what we call a participating contract. And that means if your expenses are lower than what the insurance company estimates at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, you can get some money back. And that money has traditionally helped fund your onsite planning. So that's a really important component of that plan. Neither one of the other carriers had as positive a contract in that sense as Blue Cross does. So based on this, and actually, you can look at just a brief, exactly, some, thank you. Uh, the renewal period used in the calculation was that timeframe that we showed you. The renewal is going to continue to include a wellness fund and those funds are used to provide wellness activities for employees. That's directed by one of our employees, works with a committee, works with the district to make sure we provide wellness activities. That's going to increase a little bit to forty-five thousand dollars. Again, as I mentioned, we have to increase that deductible to thirty-two hundred dollars. And as I mentioned, the initial renewal was about five point six percent. We're able to get them to zero by making a couple of changes. And, and this is moving from the current preferred formulary to the premium formulary. So describe that just a little bit. I want to talk about the two additional plans that we're going to be offering. So right now you have four plans that you offer to employees. And most everyone is in either the base, high deductible. And most everyone is in either the base high deductible healthcare plan, which the deductible will go to thirty two hundred dollars. Or they're in a twenty five hundred dollar traditional PPO plan. You might remember qualified high deductible healthcare plan, you have to meet your deductible before the plan pays anything, with the exception of uh, wellness benefits or annual, um, wellness expenses, that's all covered at a hundred percent. Under the PPO plan, there is a deductible, but there are also co-pays for office visits and co-pays for prescription drugs. So you don't have to meet that deductible if you're gonna find base. Additionally, the district funds seven hundred and fifty dollars into an employee's health savings account, HSA plan every year for that thirty two hundred dollar plan. What we're gonna be able to offer is a couple of plans with the same designs as those first two plans. But they're gonna use a, no, that's good, you're good there. They're gonna use the Blue Select Plus Network. So your traditional plans are set up on the Preferred Care Blue Network, which is the largest network of providers that Blue Cross offers. The Blue Select Plus Network is a subset of that. So, goes to all of the hospitals and all the providers in the big Preferred Care Blue Network. Blue Cross is negotiated with, and there are, I think it's twelve, seven, uh, Kansas City hospitals. They've negotiated more aggressive discounts. So, when you go from the large network down to the small one, you're able to negotiate an aggressive discount with those people. And thus, you're able to deliver a discounted premium. The nice thing is, when we go to educate employees on this, we can talk about, really have four main plans. Two of them with a narrow network, two of them with a broad network. If you feel like, happy with St. Luke's, and you can stay in the Preferred Care Blue Plan, there's no increase from last year. If you feel like, either A, maybe you already go to Shawnee Mission slash Advent Hospitals, or maybe your doctor's already in the Blue Select Plus Network, you could switch to that plan and save yourself in premium. Or maybe even afford to put your dependents on a plan. The next page with the premiums listed. All the green boxes, same as last year. Someone enrolls in the thirty two hundred dollar plan, they don't pay a monthly contribution in terms of the single employee, and they receive seven hundred and fifty dollars in their health savings account, to spend on healthcare. All the other plans, you can see the monthly premium there, the, the monthly cost of employee in the last column. The bottom of the two plans, the blue plans. Qualified high deductible healthcare plan, same as the top plan, twenty five hundred dollar base PPO plans we call it. You can see that in the thirty two hundred qualified high deductible plan, that's zero, double asterisk. They're gonna get an additional eight hundred dollars into their HSA. I feel like I'm a little salesman here, sorry. But it's, but it's, Carl's got me all excited, man. Um, so for a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in that HSA account. This is a reminder, the district gives that to them, goes into their account, it's their money immediately. It doesn't come back to the district, they don't have to use it in that year, rolls over from year to year, and they can add more to that. Look at the dependent. You're qualified high deductible healthcare plan, Preferred Care Blue, a thousand dollars, a thousand and two dollars a month to pay for your spouse. It's two hundred dollars less, not quite two hundred dollars less like this. Sorry. Uh, quite a bit less monthly if you're spouse on the plan. And then for your kids, goes from six seventy down to five forty-three. Or if you say, gee, I wouldn't mind going to that narrow network, but I don't want that large deductible, I want co-pays, I want prescription drug co-pays. You can go to that PPO plan. So, the important thing here with these plans is education. So as we approach open enrollment this spring, we will have, we have a third party that we, the district and we work with called Benefits Direct. They will be out educating employees, we'll do some memos, et cetera. The important thing is, um, we've got an option that first of all, no increase for the third and fourth year in a row on the traditional plans, but these other two plans we can offer. Don't have to go to those plans, that's not what the district is pushing you to, but it's an option to go there. Fifteen hundred dollars towards your thirty two hundred dollar deductible, that's a lot of money. So, next page shows you the four different plan designs that you have currently. And the next page shows you the next two plan designs. Fair here, it's not really fair, we don't really have an option, because we have to make those statutory choices on. That's according to, to the federal government. Okay, let's talk about the prescription drugs. Today, or any insurance company, when they cover prescription drugs, they offer a formulary. And that is a preferred droibles. So that either A, you're paying the cost of that drug if you're on a high deductible healthcare plan, or you're paying a co-pay if you're on the traditional PPO. Part of the discount that, that Blue Cross is willing to give you is to switch to the new formulary. You can see that ninety-two, a little over ninety-two percent of your total prescriptions will not change with this new formula. Three point one percent are gonna have a positive change. That means they're either gonna have a lower co-pay than they're paying today, or they're gonna have a lower cost if they're on the high deductible. So that's ninety-five and a half percent. Point one percent are gonna have negative, that would mean if they continue to take that same drug, they have a higher co-pay or pay a little bit more. And then there's the excluded four point three percent of those. Those folks will have to find a, they can still take that prescription, it's not gonna be covered by the plan. The insurance company will communicate directly with them and give them an alternative for that drug, so that they can continue to pay what they're paying today. Or really, what they want you to do is talk about with the doc, the doctor, to make sure that they'll give alternatives so that you can use that drug and keep your costs low. I think it's important to note that we're not talking about drugs like EMira or expensive cancer drugs, most of those are specialty drugs, which there are no alternatives right now anyway. So it's, those are not what's gonna be excluded. It's gonna be things like maybe drugs that are now available over the counter, that haven't been before. There are true generic alternatives too, but over ninety-five percent of your folks are not gonna be impacted by that. But a hundred percent are gonna need the premium credit that you got. Next page just gives you a little bit more discussion about that. And the page fifteen here shows you what some of the alternatives are for those drugs. Okay. Any questions at this point? Just a little bit more, yeah, so. So your ancillary plan renewals. Uh, that will be a couple of pages, and that would be Delta Dental of Missouri. They're renewing with a zero percent increase and no change in benefits, and those rates are gonna be guaranteed for two years. And you can see, you have currently a low plan and a high plan. And you can see the rates for those plans that employees will continue to pay. Your vision plan will also renew. That's gonna renew with no increase in rates, but the benefits are gonna increase a little bit. Contact allowance is gonna go up by thirty bucks. And then, we're gonna add the, what's called the VSP light care, so it's an ability for somebody to be able to get sunglasses on the plan, they can get other glasses. And that's a four-year warranty. Exhibits are just some of the, the plan designs for the dental plan. Yeah, plan is not a good vision, so. I wanna thank Dr. Kalkara, Jackie, Suzanne Bronson, were very patient with us. Is, it's a lot of information. We were looking at the construction stuff, it reminded me of, I was a bit lost there. I'm sure the insurance stuff, we get lost too, so it's a lot of data we had to go through. Um, we presented this to Ray Team on the twenty ninth. They seemed overall pretty positive about it, so, um, we're very happy about it, we have answered your questions.
I see why you're excited now. Yeah, increasing the HSA by eight hundred dollars on that plan is significant. I've been wanting us to do that for, why do I think that will improve some morale, for sure. Are we taking that in, or is Blue Cross taking that in?
That's a great question, and as you mentioned, that, we were able, so the district is wanting to continue to contribute the same dollar amount monthly that they have been for the last several years. Those plans are priced low enough that that difference, they're gonna be able either put into the HSA or put toward the dependent premium, and that's why it would be lower. So the district will, but it's no, but the, the overall budget will not increase because of the discount.
Okay, well, it's good, either way.
So yes, in the day, because the money we were able to utilize and save, they're able to push that back into some of the benefits and policies. Uh, you know, look at those, then again, it's every doctor said, what's the worry about this? Uh, we've got reduced network?
Uh, a narrow network.
A narrow.
Narrower.
So because they have a narrower network, that's when you choose, you know, those savings for employees' house is one thousand eight hundred seventy dollars a year. Employee child is one thousand five hundred and fifteen here. Anyways, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. So by again, making that choice, um, that's a significant savings to, to look at. And so, I appreciate all the work CBIS has done to be able to turn this field. Uh, but again, it's something that we've needed to do in the recent for a long time, so I know it's late in the night. And, um, insurance renewal isn't the sexiest of items to talk about at board meetings, but this is, uh, this is six week free. Oh, yeah, this is exciting that we're able to talk about this, you know, learning community.
Just a little bit about that narrow network, and I apologize, Dr. Mark Lawson, shut up. That narrow network has, uh, Children's Mercy, D E M A, North Kansas City Liberty. Uh, uh, University Health, which women, Advent, the Shawnee Mission, Alatha. So it's a very broad network, but it also includes especially fostered childrens. So it's a very, very good.
Mr. President, you mentioned something about the money that we're saving going towards the, I think it's the employee, um, wellness center. You, you mentioned that a little bit earlier, I wanted you to kinda elaborate a little bit more.
Sure, sure, uh, every year, the insurance company develops pricing for the plan and says, this is what we think you need to put us, you need to pay in premium for the year. If the expenses on the plan at the end of the year are lower than what they projected. That savings is what you have to need to help pay.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Just one other little question, so employee children, is that like one employee with children, how's that different than, than family?
So the, you have, uh, four tiers, so it's single employee, employee plus spouse, employee plus child or children, and full family.
Um, looking at the Delta Dental, how do our rates compare like to neighboring districts? Asking, I don't know, are we on the higher end, kind of midway, and I know a lot of areas will still be into that. So I'm just taking a look at it. I'm insurance.
So we're not up for renewal compared to our dental, um, to have those rates compared.
They're pretty good, the nice thing about your plan is that you have a, a low and a high plan, so employees can choose. And the difference between the plans is the high plan has orthodontic services. So if you don't need orthodontic services, then you can go to the low. And the low plan is, is pretty good, and of course, that's a, that's a plan that's paid a hundred percent by employees. Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Kevin.
I did wanna talk a little bit about this, the, the folks on front group. This is really going out of that work that we have done in the strategic plan, on the support staff training. And everyone credit, uh, the, the, Mr. Johnson, you know, thought that this was the next natural step we should be taking. To actually provide our support staff with the opportunity to down the salary schedule to self-employment. This is very similar to what we offer at certificate, but a little more targeted to the needs of the super staff. And we're, 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 once again, provide halfway at this bridge, that there's a pilot, there's a team, there's fully evaluation, continually trained. And some sort of contribution back to the overall support and new staff. But our staff members, even around, do these things, because a, a natural way of maintaining things to give them a little bit more of a different salary. Not closing, like, on the person, all these are the things facing, the not, the advancing mask. And clearly, seeing a living ambition. And we were trying to forecast a plan for this, and I think we started with really, kind of, about four years, days, about, maybe, a little bit over the first three years. We figured that, um, that's a good place to start with, and really trying, um, figuring into the plan, possible project. Be a little bit of money that we're giving to the training materials, and that, some money towards mentorship, which would be very, very, very useful now. And of course, um, once that money, that, that kind of finish on the doors, really sets the staff with the behavior of these steps, sets the conditions. Answering your questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
You have a bus purchase.
These are buses that are cut off, at least, that we've had for the last several years. Uh, costing you to less approximately at thirty twenty thousand hours. The mechanics go through our, our, the canisters, make sure the mechanically sound. Good buses, we, uh, they are, uh, these are also our buses that, that are, obviously, like, so, uh, these are buses that can transport special education, students, so they'll be in experience issues, uh, sorry, chairlifts, et cetera, so that's the reason.
Next we have the, okay.
So currently, we, our sporting events, we have a lobby that we're going through, uh, we knew that this will allow us to get, make sure everybody's screened, uh, it's coming for sporting events, uh, with our school building, we have, we have the staff. Uh, they're coming through, we have raptor system, we have a ghost that we screen through, uh, in our game, we don't have, have any of those things. It's another layer of security, uh, and, I don't know, there's the, the, I mean, split. Uh, three, we were awarded a safety grant, the direct network, the best amount of the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars is coming for the safety grant, but it will, it's got their account from capital.
So what are these? Are these the same, are these ones we saw the demonstration?
Yeah, exactly.
So our tent is just buying up to use only sporting events right now?
Did you answer?
Uh, it was a demonstration we had right now, all right, well, go ahead first. It's a fraction too, right now, high, uh, the good city lights out, it's very, very small.
Mr. President, so it says weapons association system, but in essence, it's a metal, it's metal detector? It's a metal detector, as we know it?
Yes and no, uh, so, so no, it's a part of it. So sixteen different settings on the device, so you can move it all the way down to the strong setting, or that would be, in essence, a metal detector, but it's. Uh, that is not what the company recommends using unless you're worried about liners, they, and, uh, some of these items that we want our schools to know, that's not. Uh, we recommend we will change the setting that's two, two or three up, you know that, uh, where it, it actually triggers on, it's the, the gun, the weapon. Um, and that's where it triggers on, uh, not only have the, the false positive, uh, so we didn't show you how that looks at, at the, the church. Uh, the way, uh, schools use it, they're getting, so, they're watching folks, in that, around, but I can walk through with my keys, I sub phone all those things through. Uh, and also, that's, they have a lot of security in our games, uh, when we're going through those devices, we're scared, wanting everybody else. Uh, it gives us, it gives our people in the game.
Mr. President, so this is a stationary, but, um.
Don't hear, we don't want that, uh, they sit, they stand about forty inches tall, I would guessing, uh, this, the, the, they would have twenty-four guns, because they operate off of a, a twenty-four volt lithium battery, like we've brought in a quarter of a strip. Uh, we store those, we go in there, we charge them off of, they know, they are, uh, so we can go set them, the span is thirty-six and forty inches. With, uh, they go down, there's a leak on cell phone, they calibrate some, they calibrate in a matter of seconds, uh, it sticks to the phone, it, it comes in an app and phone, and goes through, make sure we're checking for electrical current, uh, so different places, that's where we got, uh, electric, uh, so, uh, we, we base it on that.
Okay, so it's not a wand, and it's not any energy though?
It's two posts, like, if you walk through there, thirty, thirty, it's wide.
So, how high is sufficient for a tall person?
Yes.
In regards to, uh, the grant, um, the, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, that have to be, there, were there any other alternatives?
Yeah.
To, uh, use it for that, we don't have.
So when we walk through, uh, what we're looking at is currently, or so we have, we've got a lot of things that, that, that we're already, uh, doing well. So smart research, robot research, you do that, we've done, we've done, we've restored bond process, uh, we've gone through those things. Uh, we felt that when we went through, talked this game, and first, uh, people changed the order here, uh, after the discussion, that, that this was the, the factor that we used.
The, uh, during the four events, the primary, uh, benefit, uh, outside, for, the, uh, the ease of, getting people to get into the game, and then out.
And screen, I think that's a big part of the screen that everybody, where we don't have to, people, where.
What they, what they had to, uh, neither urgent or bad, too, or they just want to carry, maybe, they walk through them.
There are, so I talked to the shop on the schools a lot, uh, they have ninety-ish in all of the buildings, uh, so I talked, I spent, I'll say a couple of hours between both the phone calls with her. I talked to, uh, her central office level, and also talked to the principals to see what cards they had with, with the, with the background. Uh, if you go through this in cabinet, uh, with seven off phone, for instance, two red roll cans, side by side, we walk through your backpack, we find, those they can stack on top of each other. It works, so just some supporting systems like that, uh, unrolls, it's operating, the first people that unrolls a home, has been unrolled, uh, all condensed, they will share this one.
I'm just curious, I know we had a, uh, a picture or something of the, the detectors. But when did we make a decision to go forward with that?
So we've had the ongoing discussion, Ms. Bobby, and this is just an extension of what we have done with the safety, uh, procedures for our games. And one of the things is when we have so many folks coming into our games, we have no knowledge who they are and what they have. Um, this is just further extending what we've already put in place. Uh, the grant that we have has certain terms and conditions by which we should spend, we can spend the money, but it also has to be spent by April twelfth. And so moving forward, not putting it in order, not thinking about it, the money has to be spent. Uh, it has to be encumbered by the twelfth of April, and then it has.
I told, as you can see, there's any kind of, uh, wiggle room.
It's not. We've all, I've been on the phone, there is no wiggle room, so we kind of are behind the eight ball right now. And so to the question that I think Mr. Burton, uh, proposed, much of what we can spend it for, we already have as a district. Um, but again, to further extend what we do, uh, in terms of our games with the clear backpacks and the wanding every other or random, this takes the randomization away from individuals coming into the game, um, they would all pass through.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, how many of these systems would be able to purchase?
So sixteen thousand changes, I don't, I don't have time, uh, there's another we all gave for the high school, uh, who was all gave in middle school, uh, I think it's six of the high school, four of the school. Uh, and then we have, uh, we have, uh, the chief, or, uh, our second.
There's nineteen on the bid, show that team.
Mr. President, would you say that they're mobile, can it be used for complaints?
Yes, ma'am.
Like when you have complaints, it's, I have a little concern that the doors is open, there, there, we can just, you know, bring it out, so.
I think, uh, in regards to what we're, what we're talking about business for the sporting events, uh, the, uh, I think we can get ahead of ourselves a little bit, in regards to what we want to do with passports, and decisions we want to pass, pay, with the passport. The, uh, for the safety concern, we're already, uh, except this three hundred thousand dollars, the safe, what we can use this money for, what, 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 uh, other considerations we probably aren't have. So, uh, this is, uh, this is for that, as far as in school buildings, that's, that's not something that, uh, happening that it's time to leave back to the community. And look, if you, what we usually do towards safety, uh.
And the reason why I ask, because that's not just the school, the students going in and out. That's a lot of strangers, everybody, you know, people bringing their families. This is just not a regular school day, and, you know, kids going in and out, and got a little bit more, uh, eye on that, you know, because they have some, so. But that door, that one door, that everybody comes in and out, I just thought, since it's mobile, since it's in the school, then, because you're talking about the community.
I think, uh, for, uh, that's a good way to leave, that's.
I mean, uh, I think the, of course, Mrs. Watson, as a student, that, that was, and, and, I mean, that was another, but, I mean, I agree.
Oh, well, maybe we are, this is awesome.
Hold on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So are we confident they can get it, get all the stuff to us by May twentieth? And if some, if it came on the twenty-first or something, we, we lose three hundred thousand?
No, uh, we, they'll, it just happens, they, they have to.
And we're doing our, and that's a good question, and those are questions that I posed, because I do not want to put us in, as a district, in a hold where if it's not here and in the schools that we are not paying three hundred thousand dollars out of our operating.
Yeah, because with the three hundred, this is a bargain to do this, for sure. But we don't want to be pushed up against that date.
These devices have to be up somewhere.
And to answer your question about, if it is possible.
What, what's the lack expectancy in the obsolescence timeframe of these devices?
So, that's your question, I talked to a colleague about that, the, 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 the part is what we do with that, it's the battery. Uh, that's probably the, the catch, I think, so nice, it's, it's a little wobbly battery, you can go to the hose and tie. Uh, that was one of my big things, there was, we look at several different options. Uh, so I brought this one forward to, for everybody to see, I didn't want to be in a position where we have this. We need a part to make it work, and then we have to order from a company who knows where, and it takes weeks, months, which is what we experienced with a lot of different, uh, different things. Uh, so the, the main part that's in the, just the battery, which is the only replacement.
Where would these be stored, if they're not in use?
We work with buildings, I can't tell you what we're at, every, there's a building, we work with building, there's, there's, it's, uh, stock, we're a school seeker.
Thank you.
What would these, uh, what would they anticipate, operations, we can be, right?
So if we put them on, this one is probably after, we've been able to, probably after that, communication, literally, uh, on Apple site, so we do a, 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 set out, we get that, a lot of, the backs. Uh, so that's, uh, so I would anticipate that that would be the start of the, of the question.
It'd be over here, a little bit, one, even, three dags, yeah.
President, I knew that the board through the release that we employee management system are at three, three weeks, beginning March twelve, twenty twenty-four, in June, April, set at five twenty-four.
Now, speak for just a second, this is simply explored, so we don't want to start with the, 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 the system. Right now, system does a lot of things, we do, we go all, finding that's in the HR system, but, over the ten years we've used, it needs to change, and it's simply seen by us as how. In order to, this is, this is, this would add somebody who feels like, but, we think it, we think it's good students, they don't find, it's, it's hard this. Similar to the SL process, we have an engagement script, we've got this brain, which may be, which may be greater than the, uh, which may be greater than the options. Other than that, there's a chance that this would be January, June, October, July, just inside, which is.
Mr. President, I knew that the board through social security could provide security services, the district already attached.
We must get, uh, so this is a technicality, uh, Homeland Security was bought by Kustos, uh, they, they, they bought the company, they inherited the contract. When I, uh, came over to oversee security and, and, I wanted to make sure that that change, reflected Kustos stay on contract, same term, same condition, same, they, same, it takes just about, uh, make sure we have the company that's a, on contract.
Mr. President, move the boards, approve the purchase of Apple Magnets M twos with Apple Care for the high schools, a amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
This is an extension of that, this, 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 this one, sure, that students still have access to, they'll be created, that's, uh, that's true. And as a program, already, speaking of the teacher, we thought, we thought, uh, solution, into the system, they should, kids have a right.
Pass.
Mr. President, move the board to prove the purchase of fifty M seventy E at a price of eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents, for a total purchase price of forty-one thousand two hundred dollars.
This is just something that we had, we just found the purchase last year, um, this, we can use as, as additional computers, new trails, new, new trails. By the way, certainly, for, for those different students, and then also just for the, we didn't have to, we got, they were used.
Man, you do a lot of work, man, you done, you done a lot.
I really like hearing them.
No, I mean, just overhaul the system and everything. It'll be quiet, quiet. Quiet in here, please, it'd be great.
The district matched fifty thousand for those, for the, for the, for the, for the.
Final thing I'll talk about tonight, this was actually a grant we were thinking of last year, and some paperwork issues, so, so, the street, you know, told us those paperwork issues and. The final thing I'll talk about tonight, this was actually a grant that we were thinking of last year, and some bigger issues, so, so the street scene will tell the justice with those issues and. Um, right now, this is going to just improve our state of interest. The, the biggest security, we think of lawyers, and this is just that, and I read, maybe the, student data, city card also. So, this is a three year plan, so we would be using the services for the next two weeks, really good value. That's it, the street scene, there's, there's less than two, shall be, we can, people, which, and genetics, it's in the classroom.
Mr. President. I didn't, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. President, board members, I also want to take a few minutes, I'm Dr. Robin Correll. We do an update on our work towards the selection of a K through twelve SEL curriculum that would be used in all schools, starting in the fall, the new school year, in August, of the new school year. So, social emotional learning curriculum is research-based instruction for children and adolescents, foster knowledge, skills and attitudes for healthy development, relationship skills, and lifelong learning. The learning outcomes fall in five major areas, so part of the castle wheel, or the castle five, or, uh, castle, uh, curriculum that's, uh, stands for the collaboration of academic, social, emotional learning. Those five areas, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship-building skills, and social awareness. The SEL curriculum would be a tier one classroom instruction, tier one meaning teachers teach the curriculum every day or at a scheduled time during the elementary, probably four times a day, or four times a week. Middle school, once or twice, hopefully we're not going to cut twice, and then the high school level, we begin one time a week during the advisory time. The tier one, uh, classroom instruct, tier one classroom instruction is part of, Kevin, Dr. Mr. Prosser, could you fast forward, uh, to the, where you see the photos and the presentation?
You can, with all the, with your.
Oh, yeah, oh, thanks. Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is part of a presentation we did at the Equity Council, our work actually began last spring during the Equity Council, during the month of April and May. So, Dr. Granger had asked if, if we have a small committee to look at SEL curriculums. So, three time school district has not had a K through twelve SEL system-wide SEL curriculum in our times, but we have had pockets of an SEL curriculum here, every middle school's here, a certain grade level or apartment here. So, we had, in essence, in the month of May last year, we did a review of what we had that were currently vetted, uh, productive, meaningful, relevant, and working, and already established in our school district. So, we reviewed Move This World SEL curriculum, Second Step SEL curriculum, and Everyday Speech SEL curriculum. From there, uh, we spent time this past fall semester, so for example, we, at Equity Council, we would have a breakout session, we would look at rubrics, we would look at what we are looking for when we're selecting the SEL curriculum. So, there's some photos from our, uh, time this past fall, and what we wanted to do was have the schools have an opportunity to use the, the various, uh, SEL curriculums, whether they be Move This World, Everyday Speech, or Second Step Curriculum. So, from there, we really were able to have time in the fall semester through January, February, and then we were able to, in February, uh, the curriculum instruction department was having a review of curriculum for, I believe, some science curriculum. So, we joined in on that natural opportunity to also review curriculum, the SEL curriculum. So, that evening, we had a really good turnout at the RSEC, that was on February twenty first, just a couple of weeks ago, there were close to sixty different principals, teachers, and gave your interventions to give you to review the science curriculum, as well as the S SEL curriculum. And so, some of the things that, uh, the scoring rubric, as we are doing, uh, research, we, as we, uh, viewed the, the curriculum, we want to make sure it was research-based, it was based on the castle wheel, and it had a school-wide systems approach. It had tier one, uh, classroom instruction, as well as tier two and tier three support for additional, uh, teaching, uh, was integrated in our technology, it was, uh, self-assessed, where the teacher, I'm sorry, teacher assessed, where the teacher could assess the students' learning on, on the learning modules. Uh, it, it also was highly engaged, interactive, and relevant to the learning. Uh, platform, we wanted to have it be user-friendly and easy to deploy, integrate, and cost-effective, with this, this, uh, cost meaningful for the expenditure, so. And as a result of the review of curriculum, the, the recommendation to move forward is with Everyday Speech. Everyday Speech is, is very relevant, it's user-friendly, it's, it's easy for teachers to assess, uh, access, it has, uh, Kevin, that, that, Mr. Prosser, could you move on to the next presentation?
The document.
Yes, in that document. So, with Everyday Speech, what, what would it look like for the release of Everyday Speech? An example would be, most mo, most learning modules are about twenty minutes long, it's twenty minutes long, allow for it here to elementary school during home room time at the beginning of the day, or, uh, family building time, school building time at the end of the day, or if you're in a middle or high school, that's, that fits perfectly within advisory time. So, the twenty minutes looks, uh, looks alike in normal classroom engagement, where you have a lesson that has an anticipatory set, or a, like a, an activity to get us fueled up for what we're going to do, the excitement of what we're going to learn, it was a unit of learning. The unit of learning is usually about five to seven minutes long, it is a video where the teacher is able to play the video to have a unit of learning on a certain topic. And then after the activity, or after the learning, there's a time, five to seven minutes for a, uh, teacher-led family, or a student engagement, a school activity, classroom activity, a discussion or dialogue on the topic of our unit of learning. Then, like with any other, uh, unit of learning, the teacher has time to assess the students' learning, are we having mastery over this content? So, when we are looking at tier one instruction, and we are looking at what are students learning, how can we respond to students not learning, how do we scaffold without or extend our learning, or how do we promote additional support through our building schedule, RTI time? We're going to model that same component with the SEL learning. If we encounter students that are struggling with social emotional learning, skill set, or relationship building, or, you know, uh, problem-solving on the playground, or whatever the component of learning would be, then, for example, we would be able to use counselors to create a small group to follow up with this group. Or maybe build a smaller group of five or seven students and have a behavior interventions, provide a tier two or tier three to reteach lessons, much like what we do with curriculum, we're going to find time to reteach the learning from that unit, or the previous unit, we would do the same, uh, same component for our SEL curriculum. Uh, the, the curriculum is designed for forty weeks, there are lessons for, for four to five days a week, so we could go the entire school year from, from August through May, and not have to show a lesson again unless a classroom teacher so desired to do so. The units are just like any other unit, they have, uh, unit of instruction with social sequence for what the learning is, what the learning objectives are going to be, there's a pre and a post-test, and the, and the teacher has different ways of tier instruction to provide supplemental, uh, classroom engagement and support for students that are struggling. Also, with Everyday Speech, with Everyday Speech, we are able to have, the, the platform is very user-friendly, so if you're a classroom teacher at the elementary level, or advisory teacher at middle or high school level, your, a class would be created for you. And then as the students progressing through those units of learning, you're able to show that the student has mastered that learning. Also, from a principal point of view of the dashboard, the principal has access to all the teachers or all the users within his school, their school, then they are able to see time on ta, time with the use of the platform, and the time within the u, unit of learning for that thing. So, if you're a principal, you can easily do a fidelity, fidelity check to see, are my teachers on the same lesson? And the curriculum is K through twelve, so it provides, for example, if you're a elementary, uh, principal, you would have the same unit of learning each day, it would just be at a different grade level per second, or for the fifth, whatever grade level would be. So, that provides unity and conformity, allows for consistent consistency, and it's just much, uh, greater impact for our students and their learning. So, when you think of the fall rollouts, the, the Everyday Speech platform is going to allow us to use and access the curriculum, K through twelve, uh, for the month of April and May and June, free charge, free charge. So, if you're a classroom teacher, and you want to start diving into it, and you need your net, and speed yourself familiar with it, that's a great asset. But when school starts before, uh, school starts in August, there are pre, pre-service days, back-to-school days, what we want to do is have a training session. So, the platform is very user-friendly, it has self-guided, on-demand, uh, tutorial trainings that you as a classroom teacher administrator should take these, uh, modules, particularly two hours in length, that will be to acclimate it to the platform. Then, we are going to provide a forty-five minute Zoom session for training for K one and two, three, four and five, little school folks, high school folks. And from that forty-five minute section, uh, section of learning, you will be, uh, really, in essence, ready to go. What Everyday Speech has also done for us during our pilot time is we have found they're extremely focused on customer service, if they see a, a grade level team not using it, they, they have contacted the principal or the grade levels. Or they will reach, reach out to you individually or in groups and say, did you need additional support? And they have bent over backwards, free charges, to provide training with teachers as needed to ensure the fidelity and use, uh, system one. So, we feel very confident in, in the process for Everyday Speech, the training, the customer service, the platform use, and the content of the learning. So, uh, let's see. And we do, and there are other, several other school districts in the state of Missouri using it, we saw it, uh, Jefferson City, Park Hill School District, Wainsville, uh, outside of St. Louis, as well as Francis How, outside of St. Louis, and Kenneb, Missouri, down to the boot, yeah, right? And as far as cost, uh, we have, this platform was about twenty-five thousand, uh, dollars, uh, cheaper, more effective, cost-wise, than the competitors. So, it wasn't just on cost, it was on the quality of the product, on the service they provide, the platform that they have, and the customer service they provided as well, as well as the cost being very, very competitive. So, uh, for a school's district size, uh, eight, the eight-five-hundred, our school district size, it's around forty-nine thousand two eighty-six, so for the forty-nine thousand two eighty-six, we were really looking at it at a two-year contract, uh, just to be more effective and more cost-effective. So, they were going to give us a fifteen percent discount on the overall purchase for a second year, so the total purchase would be, uh, eighty-three thousand seven eighty-six, eighty-three thousand seven eighty-six. Now, I have a bit of good news, we had a local, uh, uh, partner here for education, Jackson County Children's Student Fund Grant, the Jackson County Children's Student Fund Grant has been immensely helpful to the Raytown School District. Most notably with a huge underwriting of our trauma-smart training, basketball videos, so the trauma-smart training has really la, laid the foundation for, uh, for adults, after they receive a training, they, they have more experience in the, uh, adverse childhood experiences, the ACEs. The adverse childhood experiences that develop, uh, impact the development and growth of cha, of a childhood brain, and how that trauma impacts their ability to relationship build, work with, with adults at school, connect with different people. So, the trauma-smart training is really laid the foundation for adults feeling and recognizing the need of a social emotional learning curriculum. So, we feel that this is, uh, really an opportune time to do so. Back to the Jackson County Children's Student Fund Service, they, they're going to give us fifty-five thousand dollars to use towards the purchase of an SEL curriculum, and the remaining twenty-seven thousand will come out of another grant budget that I'm going to adjust, so that we can have this money together for a two-year purchase of eighty-three thousand, three apost to the Raytown School District. It's meaningful for students, it's relevant for students' social emotional learning and health and wellness, and it will be a huge help for building community at the elementary, middle and high schools, and eventually the learning can be extended to the house as well. So, that is my brief overview of the social emotional learning curriculum, Everyday Speech. I tried to keep it concise, and I know I went over the five minutes.
Mr. President, I have one question.
Yes.
Um, last one, we talked about pre-K, i- is, and, and they presented to us, um, about kind of the same, i- i- am I with the same, you know?
Yes, actually, this includes preschool as well.
Okay.
K through twelve.
Okay.
So, conscious discipline is the SEL curriculum that our early childhood buildings use, they're going to continue to use that program, um, but currently, we don't have a consistent tier-one SEL curriculum used throughout the district, K twelve.
Okay.
So, we don't have any reservations at all that what students are learning through the preschool program won't dovetail nicely into what they'll get as a future student.
Thank you, that, that was my, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Executive, try to, in the vote, I'd like to read the donations for this month. We have a donation of one hundred dollars from Lania, uh, Peterson, to two, three trails preschool community garden, donation of fifty-three pandas club, club news, to Robinson Elementary School, and express. Donation of ten, ten-dollar gift cards to Robinson Elementary School from QuickTrip, donation of twenty, fifteen-dollar gift cards to Southwood Elementary School from Apple News. A donation of five thousand Mental Health Matters bracelets, total of one thousand eighty dollars for all secondary schools, Robinson Road. Uh, donation of five thousand information cards and bracelets, total of five hundred dollars for all secondary schools from Reader's Center. We thank everyone that has donated this to our school history this month, and we greatly appreciate it, and my team, and the great leadership from, thank you.